Oh, I didn't even see him. I thought he was out of here.
Oh, no, I didn't even see him. I thought he was out of here.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 3 meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're both happy and delighted to have each of you with us tonight. Madam Clerk, may we please have a roll call?
Commissioner May.
Here.
Commissioner Cantu.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Perez.
Here.
Commissioner Strickland.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Here.
Okay, we'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the August 6, 2025 city commission meeting. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments? Are all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye?
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries a seven zero. Now move on to our agenda. Review if there are any changes, our city manager will address them.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, we're pulling item number nine E, the Event Center Land Development Code text amendment from the agenda. We're adding to item eight P, Mayor Oral Zone Support Fund Distribution, $1,500 to the Bucks Little League Football and $1,500 to the Tigers Little League Football from the Zone Support Funds of Commissioner Donette Henry. Thank you.
Motion to approve the agenda with the said changes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be denoted by saying aye?
Aye.
Those who are in opposition, same sign. Motion carries a seven zero.
Okay, we don't have any presentations tonight, so we're going to move on to item number seven, that's our citizen comments. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the city commission on any item on the consent agenda. My first speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Frances Chu. We'll come circle back to John. Our next speaker is Frances Chu.
Good evening, Frances Chu, 351 North Sonica Street, 8G and 8H. I looked at the summary. I don't know if this is a duplicate. I noticed that the streets are the same, the addresses are different, and the money is allocated, I don't know. I just question that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue. Same question that she just asked, is what I had. Oftentimes, we do this, they're duplicates, and you don't know why you're doing duplicates. The wording is exactly the same. The amounts are different, though. One says 200,000, the other says 211,000. So if the amounts are different, then they can't be duplicates, but the wording is duplicate. So I can't figure out, without going into great detail, and you know me and computers, I don't see squat on the computer. So I can't figure out what the difference is and why. I know there's an easy explanation, and Derrick will sit there and say, okay, dummy, this is what it is. But I can't figure out, because the numbers are different, so it can't be a carbon copy. So I just can't figure, she can't figure it out. She's not the only one, there's several others that couldn't. So I have no explanation for themselves. Thank you.
Those were my only speakers for the consent agenda.
Yes, within these items, if you had the ability to go to the agenda packages in the backup documents, it will show that some dealt with flooring, some dealt with drywalling, repainting. And so within these Milton hurricane ratifications, we're trying, we did the work, and we're bringing it back to ratification. So they're saying the same thing, but there are different items within the agenda document saying what was actually done at many of these facilities, and they could be at the same address. And it's just how we have to report these items to FEMA. And I know David Waller is in the back, if he wanted to come out and share any additional items, if you had questions.
All right, any additional questions? Let me follow that. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. No additional questions or commentary? All those in favor, let it be denoted by saying aye?
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries a seven zero.
We're going to move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings and quasi judicial hearings. Item nine A is the Finance Department Budget Division Fiscal Year 2526 Property Taxes and Budget for the City of Daytona Beach. Item number one is the public hearing, and members of the general public may speak on the proposed millage rate and the fiscal year 2526 budget. I have one speaker, Mr. David Nadler.
My name is David Nadler, I'm a resident at Margaritaville off LPGA. I'm here to stand against, I'm not officially representing the community of Margaritaville, but I would think that my neighbors all would agree with me with what I'm about to say. We oppose the increase in taxes this year in the tax rate of 5.93. We'd like the millage rate to be 5.6962 if the current budget is not approved. We feel somewhat neglected out there. We have a bad road problem, which you're not responsible for, but I'm sure you understand the problem. Ms. Cantu has made a statement to me that it's Margarita's fault. Daytona is expanding, the only place to expand is west. But I don't feel too bad about us expanding, because we're a cash cow. Economically, we spend a whole lot. The reason why the tanker outlet is expanding that area of Williamson is because of the people who live west of 95, mostly. We're shopping there, we're eating there. So we're responsible for a lot of revenue for the city. We have no library, we have no park, although Ms. Cantu said that one is proposed or planned ahead. We have no post office, which I know you're not responsible for, but we feel pretty neglected that we have to drive to get to a post office. We have to drive very far to get to a library. We have no park currently, we'd like to see that happen. We'd like to expand our road. We're not a problem, we're the solution. So the value of our homes continues to decrease, actually, mine has, over the past couple of years, and yet our tax rate is going up. Margaritaville alone, and this is an unofficial number, produces about $15 million in tax revenue that includes Volusia County Schools and Daytona. City of Daytona gets approximately $5 million of that, or one-third. That's, don't hold me to the number, that's my own estimate. We just feel that we're neglected, we'd like to be heard, we'd like to be counted on, and we'd like you to not approve 5.93 in the millage rate, but hold it to 5.6962, considering the fact that our property values are going down. Millage rate and the taxes go up. And I appreciate your time and hope that you consider no longer neglecting the people who are bringing money to the city of Daytona Beach. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak, please? Okay, first of all, no, you can sit down, no one's, you're done. Mr. Nadler definitely is not speaking for the rest of the residents of Margaritaville, and I can guarantee you that. And Monday, we have a meeting every month, and I hope Mr. Nadler shows up at that meeting. And of course, we are not responsible for the LPGA road, and I'm sure a lot of residents in the LPGA area would like to have all the amenities that you do have in Margaritaville. And there is a park that I actually took my ARPA funds that bought land over there with city land, that it will be a park over there, and you are not being neglected. And what I did say is when Margaritaville was approved on the map, is the reason why we have a problem over in that area, because that's when all the businesses decide to move over in that area. So definitely, you have more amenities than I do over in my area. So, and furthermore, there's not an increase being raised. So thank you, and have a nice night.
Okay, our next speaker is John Nicholson.
Tough act to follow. I've been coming to these 40 years now. When I first looked at the budget, it was $99 million and 6.9 mils. George Burton was arguing that we should drive down the millage, because we had the highest millage in the county, all right? And we did. The millage was down to 5.4. Well, now you're going to increase it by half a mil. All right, if you look at your chart, it's here, it's going down, and now we're going back up. We decreased it by 1.5, we're just going to increase it by .5. Two more years, and we will be back where we were 30 years ago, which is not a good thing. Secondly, we were 1,000 employees, in 2008, we had a recession. We cut employees down to 900 or 890, all right? Now we're going back up, all right? You don't want to repeat the problems of the past. Please be aware that the building, at some point, is going to slow down, although it doesn't look like it. If you go out on LPGA or Williamson, they're building left and right, the city will increase probably another 10, 15,000 people, we will get $10 million more in resources. But please be aware that what comes around goes around. We went through this in the past. We had a problem with too many employees, we had a problem with the tax rate. Please just be aware of it. We're building, we're replacing a lot of, Jim Chisholm was a tight one. He didn't spend any money. So now we're spending money to do things that we should have been doing. Sidewalks, roads, parks. It's just what you just have to do. Chisholm did that as well. He bought police cars, et cetera, that we had not been buying previous to his tenure. We went to a, what, 27% increase in taxes when he came, all right? Please be aware, if we absolutely need this, let's have it. I don't like rollback year after year, that's what got us in trouble the last time. So use it judiciously, if we need to increase it, we must do it, because we don't want to get in the position where we were the last time. Thank you.
That was my final speaker.
All right, do we have any additional comments concerning the consent agenda? I'm sorry.
Then I'm going to move on to item number two of nine A, which is the resolution. This is a resolution tentatively determining the amount and fixing the rate of taxation, and making the annual property ad valorem levy in the amount of 5.9300 per $1,000 of non-exempt assessed value for general fund operations of the City of Daytona Beach for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025 through September 30, 2026, increasing property taxes by 4.10%, and the voted debt service millage of 0.1395, and providing an effective date. So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All right, here, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, it's nine A three, is a resolution. It's a resolution tentatively adopting the budget for fiscal year October 1, 2025 to September 30, 2026, for the City of Daytona Beach, prescribing the net sources of revenue in the estimated amount of $379,813,600, I'm sorry, $363, setting forth expenditures and transfers in the amount of $379,813,363, of which operating expenditures total $303,122,176, transfers $63,889,400, and capital expenditures $12,801,787, and providing an effective date.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay.
It's time to go for a break. We have to adjourn, recess for the DDA to do their business, and we will reconvene very shortly. taxes by 4.10%, and the voted debt service millage of 0.1395, and providing an effective date. So move.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other comments? All right, hearing, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Okay. It's 9A3, is a resolution. It's a resolution tentatively adopting the budget for fiscal year October 1st, 2025, to September 30th, 2026, for the city of Daytona Beach, prescribing the net sources of revenue in the estimated amount of $379,813,600, I'm sorry, $363, setting forth expenditures and transfers in the amount of $379,813,363, of which operating expenditures total $303,122,176, transfers $63,889,400, and capital expenditures $12,801,787, and providing an effective date. So move. Is that it?
All right, we have a motion and a second. All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Okay.
It's time to go for a break.
Need to...
We have to adjourn, recess for the DDA to do their business, and we will reconvene very shortly.[452.12]
Let us reconvene.
Okay, we're going to move on under our public hearings under 9C. It's the City Attorney's Office ordinance amending Section 8642 of the City Code relating to camping on public property with a federal and state law. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending Section 8642 of the City Code of ordinances relating to camping on public property, repealing parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Take the motion from Commissioner Cantu. Who's the second?
Paris.
I thought so. Commissioner Paris.
They were in harmony.
Yes.
And I have no speakers on this item, Mr. Mayor.
All right, no questions or comments? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries a 7-0.
We're going to move on to item 9D. It's a City Attorney's Office redistricting ordinance. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending Subpart A, Article 2, Section 2 of the City Charter, amending the boundaries of the existing city commission members district within the city of Daytona Beach, Volusia County, Florida, establishing new commission member district boundaries in accordance with the Florida Constitution, Florida statutes, Article 2, Section 2 of the City Charter, and other legal requirements, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. We'll take it from Commissioner Cantu and second from Commissioner May.
And then staff.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Letitia. So, Mayor and City Commissioners, I do want to make sure that we discuss what is in the record and what's in front of you. You know, this process started when you all repealed the redistricting ordinance that was adopted in 2023 with an intent to adopt a new redistricting ordinance based on the 2020 census in time for the next general election, which is scheduled for November of 2026. And so with that intent stated, you then hired Spitzer and Associates, a consultant group out of Tallahassee, who generated the data, prepared some maps. We had a workshop, as you recall, to discuss the various maps and also in which Mr. Spitzer gave you an overview of basic redistricting principles. And of the eight or so maps that Mr. Spitzer presented and discussed at that workshop, what we have in front of us is what's known as the alternate one map, which is, appeared to be the consensus of the commission to use that map at the workshop. I've got, we have Mr. Spitzer here remotely. I hope, Mr. Spitzer, are you, are you on the line?
I, I am, yes.
Yeah. And I, I do want to make sure that you're aware that the ordinance would, would adopt the alternate one map. It would include findings, and basically the findings would be inclusive of the final report that Mr. Spitzer has generated. That final report is very similar. It's a distilled version of the general memo that he previously provided you, in which was discussed at the workshop. The exhibits would also include a legal description of the revised boundaries, as well as a spreadsheet showing all of the census tracts corresponding to the individual commissioner zones. I think it's important to lay a good record if we're going to proceed forward with this ordinance. Now, I also know that there was a brief discussion on first reading about whether you all might want to consider some slight variations to the alternate one map. And if you recall at the workshop, Mr. Spitzer presented three closely related maps. One was labeled alternate one, one was labeled 1A, and one was labeled 1B. You do not have 1A and 1B for you for approval tonight, but somebody, one of the commissioners did request, I believe, at the last meeting that Mr. Spitzer provide a summary of the differences of those maps in case you were interested. What you've also discussed and what is not included in the map that you have in front of you tonight was a relocation of the common boundary on the beachside between Zones 2 and 3. There was some discussion at the workshop. All three of the alternate one maps, 1A and 1B, had Main Street as a common boundary. There was a consensus at the workshop that you might prefer to move that boundary southward if it was feasible. Mr. Spitzer has provided you a memo saying it would be feasible, but he hasn't done any work on that because there hasn't been a decision to move forward. If you all were to decide at tonight's meeting that you wanted to do a different map, whether it's 1A, 1B, neither of those, but moving Main Street or a completely different map, we would need to go back and give you a revised ordinance with a revised map, a revised legal description, a revised final report that relates to that map, as well as a revised spreadsheet containing all of the census blocks. So keep that in mind as we move forward. And with that, if you'd like an overview from Mr. Spitzer, he's here. And if you have any questions or comments for me, I'd be happy to address them with you.
Mr. Strickler?
I was the one that suggested moving the line from the middle of the street to the backside of the businesses on the south side of the street so that we could keep the Main Street group together. And since that time, in fact, earlier this evening, I spoke with Supervisory Elections, who is present here, Lisa Lewis, and she expressed to me that we should move it. If we move it, move it south to Harvey, because it's quite a bit of trouble to draw the line behind businesses and properties that are different sizes. So I would like to amend my request to move the boundary south to Harvey, if that's possible. It seems to be, it was okay two weeks ago when we talked about it with most everybody. Nobody said, no, no, no. So if we could move it south to Harvey, I think that would be good.
But would Harvey be just one block south, further south?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it gives it.
A straight line?
A straight line, yeah.
We should just let Mr. Spitzer address that question. I know that in the, in the memo that he sent you, one of the reasons why the relocation just to the back end of the south, south side of the block of Main Street was that there weren't a lot of residences involved. And there may be more work involved, and of course, he could do that, but I want to let Mr. Spitzer address that directly, that suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. We, certainly you could do, I hope you're seeing this, this is Harvey Avenue here. You could move the, this boundary south. The original intent, as I recall, was to just keep the, the commercial buildings that abut, that directly abut Main Street, to keep them in Zone 2. So the way that we drew that line, we don't think that that affected any residential areas, residential homes, and so therefore it shouldn't affect the population. Off the top of my head, I don't know how many people live in this area here. It might be insignificant. It might not have a significant effect on, on population, but it's just something that we would have to look at, you know, and we really can't do that right now, but it's something that we could examine if that's what you want to do.
I would like to do that. Is anybody against that sitting up here?
I'm okay with that.
So am I. I'm sure he'll tell us how it affects the other zone if it does with other houses.
It sounds like.
You might be able to just do that by itself without making any other change. I don't know, but I'd like to be able to look at it in a thoughtful manner before I say yes or no.
So it sounds like the direction would be for, for Mr. Spitzer to move that line, see how it affects the, not only the population numbers, but also, you know, some of the other numbers that go along with that. And I think we'd have to come back to you, you know, with a, with a slightly different version of the final ordinance, you know, for second reading at a later meeting. We've got plenty of time to do that and comply with the statutory requirement that we have an ordinance in place 270 days prior to the next general election. I had suggested a timeline that I thought would help be protective of a redo of the lawsuit that was based on the, the statutory provision that says you can't redistrict with an intent to favor or disfavor an incumbent or challenger. But that's, you know, there are other considerations here. You know, before we send Mr. Spitzer back to the drawing board, it might be helpful to understand whether you want to entertain any of the changes that were proposed from alternate one to alternates 1A and 1B. Do you want to allow Mr. Spitzer to summarize what those differences were? He had provided you a map showing those changes, as well as a narrative description?
I do. I'd like to hear the differences because I thought towards the end of the meeting, I was more in favor of one of the other maps other than the alternate map.
Okay.
And I thought it was 1A if I recall correctly, but I think.
So was I. And for me, it was 1B. And that was because for Zone 6, the Cherry Center has a historical and sentimental value. When Commissioner May and I moved to name that after Charles Cherry, who sat in my seat, that, that neighborhood watch meets there, it's been very significant for that zone. And I don't know how much it affected 5, but I think we still kept our major African-American zones with that move.
Yeah.
So I'd like for us to look at that and see how that affects us.
And then does that, does that impact Zone 3 in that it would move more, it would move more south?
Are you talking about the difference between alternate one and 1A and 1B? Or are you talking about moving?
The proposed change.
The line on Main Street? Which of those?
A line on Main Street.
Well, that is the common boundary between your two proposed revised zones. It would move from Main Street to Harvey.
Okay. And so it would have to move me away too, though. I'd be moving further south because I'm losing.
You're losing, you're, yes.
If I'm losing part of Main Street.
Zone 3 loses, loses that part.
And so would I be moving southward?
But, but, excuse me, really, the question is, would, and I can, I can do a rough estimate of this fairly quickly if there's an opportune time to do so, but the real question is whether or not that population within this area here between Main Street and Harvey Avenue is significant enough to necessitate some other changes. It might not be. It, it might just add population to Zone 2 and take some away from Zone 3, but doesn't throw the plan out of bounds. I don't know right now.
Okay.
In any event, I can go through these different alternatives. Let me just talk a little bit about the symbology here. This is, these are the current zones in this shaded area here. The black lines show where the new boundaries would be between the different zones. So the, here is Main Street here, and these are the, this would be Zone 1, would pick up Georgetown, would lose some of this area here. This is Zone 3, Zone 2, Zone 6, 5, and 4. And remember that using the 2020 data and putting that on top of the 2012 boundaries, in other words, these boundaries here, you have a spread between the largest and the smallest district of about 46 or 47 points. Generally speaking, the acceptable threshold is 10 points. And so Zone 5 and Zone 4 had to lose population, especially Zone 4. And so the boundary from in between Zone 4 and 5 was moved to I-95, an easily understood boundary. There are some other changes made, but I think most significantly Georgetown was moved out of 4 into 1. And, and as we've said many times before, when you start moving these lines around, it's, it's sort of like pushing in the side of a balloon. You push in one side and, and the other side comes out. So it's, it's not simply a matter of, you know, equalizing the population of Zone 4 and then everything else is fine. It requires changes all over the, the, the whole map, the whole plan for the city. So that's, this is alternative 1 as currently stands right now. This is 1A, and we've talked about this before. 1A moves Bethune Point Park from proposed Zone 3 back into Zone 1. And then it also moves this census block here, which is an area occupied by Harbor Freight, Holly Hill Plaza, Aldi Grocery Store, from proposed Zone 2 back into where it is now, into Zone 5. So those are the, the only two changes between 1 and 1A. 1B keeps both of these changes, but adds two other changes. One, it moves Cypress Park and some adjacent properties from Zone 3 back into where it exists now in Zone 6. And then secondly, it moves this area here, which is bounded by Fairview, Railroad Street, North Street, and US 1, from Zone 3 back into Zone 2. And so those are the only changes between 1A and 1B. All of the plans are well within the 10-point threshold. All of the plans maintain minority-majority districts in 5 and 6. And although this wasn't a goal that was set, it just sort of occurred this way, all of the plans create a minority influence district in Zone 3. And all of the plans, you know, assuming that the, the numbers work out, could be modified by moving Harvey, making Harvey Avenue the, the southern boundary here between Zone 2 and Zone 3. I will say this, just since we're talking about this area here right now, right here, this is one census block. And, you know, it follows the, the river boundaries here, but it does not follow Harvey Avenue. So I'm assuming we would say, keep Harvey Avenue here and then go north, I believe this is Halifax Avenue, up to Main Street. So if you wanted to do this, this would become the, the boundary there.
Yeah, yeah.
And not only if you want to do, but if we're able to do it. I, I think you probably can, but I'd like to have a moment just to crunch some numbers first.
So did I understand you to say that 1B does not affect Zone 5? It was a move of 2 and 3?
No.
I asked, let him answer. He's supposed to be our expert. We paid him for this.
1B does not affect Zone 5.
Thank you.
1A does affect Zone 5. And, and remember that all of the changes, I mean, this is, these are policy decisions, but the, but the way that the maps are drawn now, you begin with alternative 1, you go onto 1A, and then 1B. 1B contains the changes that were made in 1A. And 1A does affect Zone 5 with this change here.
Remind me again of how that affects Zone 5?
It moves this block here, which in, in alternative 1 was planned to be in Zone 2, it moves this census block back into Zone 5.
What, what block is that?
This is the area that is occupied by Harbor Freight, Holly Hill Plaza, the Aldi Grocery Store. There's about 170 people in that particular block. And I can give you a better illustration of that, I believe.
It's the traditional JM Fields west of Nova.
Is that, oh, on the other side over there? On the other side of?
It was on this side. It's this west of Nova.
So now you're looking at a static PDF map that illustrates what these changes are. 1A moves this area that we just talked about, and 1A also moves Bethune Point back into Zone 1. Then 1B also moves Cypress Street Park and also moves the area bounded by North Street and Railroad Street, that particular area, into Zone 2.
Okay. Explain 1B, because you explained last time that 1B moves something back into 5 and the parks.
Well, to the extent that 1A moves something back into 5, 1B does also, because 1B contains all of the revisions that 1A had. And so the area that gets moved back into 5 is this area, this census block right here. There's about 170 people that reside in that particular block.
I'm sorry, how many?
170.
What streets are those? The actual streets? A couple of them? If I can get a better idea.
This is Brettwood, Nova, Mason, and I believe this is Vine.
And then the parks?
So if it's Vine, then that means that Scarlet Golden Center would still be in there. And you want Scarlet Golden should be connected to Derbyshire.
Derbyshire Park.
That should all be in Zone 5. I prefer that.
I think as Mr. Spitzer explained during the workshop, there would be an incremental increase in the majority-minority population in Zone 5 if that block that we're talking about right now stays in Zone 5.
Yeah.
It's a very, it's a very minor increase, but, but it would be an increase. And Mr. Spitzer, I think what, what you said during the workshop is, from the standpoint of preserving majority-minority member districts, which we have to do because we, we have had those as majority-minority districts, and they have impacted the voting, that those districts have consistently elected minority commissioners. So from the standpoint of preserving that majority-minority influence, all three of 1, 1A and 1B do that. 1A and 1B, because they move a small amount of people back into 5, increase that percentage. And I think you said it was a very slight amount, Mr. Spitzer.
And which one of those, again, keeps?
1B.
Keeps YSG in Zone 5? That's?
All three of them have YSG in Zone 5.
Okay, all right.
Well, all, all 2, right?
2.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All, all 1A and 1B.
1A.
1A and 1B move this back into 5. And, and the, the difference is it increases the voting age of African-American population of Zone 5 by something around 1 percentage point.
But when I say all three, alternate 1, I mean, YSG is on the west side of Vine, and it's north of that area that we're talking about? And that would remain in, in 5 regardless in any of those maps, 1, 1A, or 1B?
These black lines are Plan 1, and here we layer 1A on top of it. So this is the area that gets moved from what would be Zone 2 into Zone 5.
So I'm proposing we consider 1B.
And I, I can't second that, but I will say that the rationale for me is it increases the minority-majority district ever how slightly. That is perhaps, you know, one of the most important factors that we should be considering in addition to preserving the history of important parks being located in the districts that they have traditionally represented. That is a auxiliary or an additional benefit to those maps. So do we have a second?
You need a motion?
Yes.
I move that we amend our redistricting map to accept Zone, alternative B, map alternative B.
If I can, I, I guess the motion would be to amend it to, to 1B, but also with the addition of moving the common boundary between 2 and 3 on the beachside to Harvey.
We need that as well.
Yeah.
I amended to say what the lawyer just said.
Okay.
Can I get a second?
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second?
So before you, I mean, and this is a motion to, to bring the ordinance back, not to, I don't think you can approve it with those changes tonight. It's really a direction to Mr. Spitzer to revise those maps, give you revised report and data. And, and listen, it's quite possible that when it comes back at the next meeting, he may need to make other changes because of that, you push a balloon in one side, it comes out the other, right? Based on the additional changes, you know, from Main Street to Harvey. And, and you may need to look at that further, but that would be a clear direction to him if he wanted to make that motion.
And I have another question. Talking about letting parties therewith harm. So the moves from 1A remain in 1B with a couple of changes, but does Bethune Point stay in 1?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So let me, let me try to reframe the motion. I think the motion would be to continue this, to allow the consultant to, to change the map exhibit to Map 1B plus relocating the boundary south to Harvey. And then when he presents that, he'd also have to report on what the corresponding changes are in population, as, as well as to make any other related changes that need to be made to, to stay within the 10% margin and to preserve the majority-minority zones of influence.
All right.
If I might, Commissioners, just very quickly, doing some quick calculations here. There are 305 people that live in this area right here, which is on the north, Main Street, on the south, Harvey. And I, I hesitate to do this quickly, but, but I, I believe that you should but I believe that you should be able to make that change without any problems at all in terms of your, the numbers between Zone 2 and Zone 3. I don't think you'd have to make any other changes to either Zone 2 or Zone 3. But I, that's my preliminary assessment. I would like to look at it a little bit further, but it looks as though it'd be okay to do that change.
All right, do we follow the motion?
So the motion will be to continue this item until the September 17th, 2025, regular city commission meeting at 6 o'clock. And to have Mr. Spitzer amend, what is it, Alt 1B?
With the additional change of moving the common boundary on, between Zone 2 and 3 on the beachside from Main Street to Harvey.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion.
So, yeah, so that was the motion. If you want to, and the second was Henry.
Yes. All right.
So then we'll have a second public hearing for speakers on the 17th.
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Lewis, do you have, come on up. Thank you for joining us.
Supervisor of elections. One thing, I don't know if this needs to go on the record, but I would ask, is the effective date be as soon as you pass this ordinance? The reason I'm asking is because we have moved our office, and by law, I'm supposed to move, mail voter information cards to everyone to let them know we have moved our office and where we are. I have mailed to everyone with the exception of Daytona, because I know y'all are going through redistricting. But if the effective date stays the same as in December, I've got to go ahead and mail. I can't wait another 3 months to let people know that we have moved. So then that cost then becomes the city's cost for the second mailing of yours. I'm not sure of the reason. I would think because if it was to let anybody who wants to run for office, of those that are up next year, they have to live in the zone for at least 6 months, the sooner they have a chance to move, the better. That's my thinking. I don't know where these, where your current homes are now within these maps. I haven't even looked them up. I don't think anybody has. So I don't know that that would affect anybody right now if you made the effective date as soon as the ordinance was passed. That was just my two cents.
So I, and just so, look, I had previously suggested that it might be beneficial to do an ordinance that provides a lead time on the effective date to try to help us if we're, if a suit's filed against us again, based on the idea of having an intent to advantage or disadvantage commissioners, incumbent commissioners or challengers based on their residential district. Look, I mean, I can't tell you we're not going to be sued. We may be sued regardless, and you have to weigh that against a, an absolute surety that you're going to spend an additional, what would be the cost of doing the mailing?
Probably $50,000.
$50,000. So is it absolutely necessary that you delay the effective date? No, I, there is some point to what Supervisor Lewis is saying, that there would still be a long lead time for anybody to move to a district with whatever maps you create. So. Right.
I don't have a problem with that. Do we need to move on that?
Just put it as a part of the ordinance, what you bring back. That will be the effective date. Okay, thank you. And thank you. We appreciate you. As always, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Do we have any comment? Okay, no other comment? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be denoted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are in opposition, same sign. This motion passes, 7-0. We're getting there.
Again, for the record, that is being continued until the September 17th, 2025, regular city commission meeting at 6 o'clock.
And Mayor and City Commissioners, as soon as we have the revised map and population data information, et cetera, et cetera, from Mr. Spitzer, we'll post the map as well as have maps of the individual boundaries in the lobby for public view, as we've had for the Alternate 1 map.
All right.
Okay. Item 9E. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
I'm sorry, very quickly, I've done some recalculations. And that change would require a concurrent change that would move some population out of Zone 2 into Zone 3. Because without, if you made only the change to go to Harvey Avenue, that would put you slightly over 10 percentage points. And so there would need to be a minor adjustment at some other location along the boundary between 2 and 3 to sort of bring that number under 10 points.
2 to 3 in favor of Zone 2?
No, 3 gets more. You need more people.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we'll trust your judgment. You understand sort of what we're trying to accomplish, I think. Most of that has been accomplished. I don't know that the people, we don't want to get into the nuts and bolts of saying that we're trying to determine where the people are. We're more interested in the big picture of our, the history of our community. Things like, you know, major thoroughfares. Those are the things that we're not to weigh ourselves on, whether I get this block or that block. So we'll allow you to do that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Item 9E was pulled from the agenda tonight. So we're going to move on to Item Number 10, which is our introduction of ordinances. These are for city commission comments and questions only. Item 10A is a growth management planning department, hang 10 car wash, T4 rezoning. This is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 1.82 plus or minus acres of property located at 1506 South Ridgewood Avenue from tourist office restaurant T2 and tourist office retail T4 to tourist office retail T4. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date. And are there any questions or comments from the commission on this item? The public hearing is set for September 17th. Moving on to Item 10B, it's a growth management planning department to facilitate affordable and inclusive housing, Land Development Code text amendment. This is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the Land Development Code, LDC, Article 3, Section 3.4, Article 6, Section 6.22, and Article 11, Section 11.4, to support the development of affordable and inclusive housing. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing an effective date. And are there any questions or comments from the commission on this item? The public hearing is set for September 17th. Moving on to Item 10C, it's the Human Resources Department, city ordinance extending the deferred retirement option program for police officers and firefighters. This is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance of the City of Daytona Beach amending the City of Daytona Beach Police Officers and Firefighters Retirement System, Subpart D of the City Charter, amending Section 27 contributions by increasing the deferred retirement option program from 60 months to 96 months, providing for codification, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date. And are there any questions or comments from the commission on this item? The public hearing is set for September 17th. So we're going to move now on to Item Number 11, which is our administrative items. Item 11A is a city attorney's office voluntary removal of vulgar t-shirts and displays from storefronts. This is a resolution. A resolution requesting retailers on the Main Street and State Road A1A corridors and all commercial properties located east of State Road A1A to voluntarily remove indecent and/or vulgar t-shirts and displays from storefronts and providing an effective date.
Second. It's your thing.
It's not my thing.
Uh huh.
You did well.
It is.
Thank you. But you led the initiative. You've been on TV twice discussing it. It's your area. We were trying to let you make that motion.
All right.
I do have a speaker.
A motion is a motion.
I do have a speaker, Mr. Mayor, Mr. George St. Pierre.
I'm George St. Pierre, owner of Jungle George's at 1022 Main Street. And I have a much better shirt than the last time I was in front of you guys. I do appreciate you, Mr. Strickland, for this very much. And thank you, and hopefully you all do this. However, I have 2 neighbors, and they are not going to abide by it. And they have, I hate to say it, but penis-shaped pot pipes in their window. They have, they are not going to stop doing this. And when I go to code and ask them to stop it, they say it's not enough to be a sex store. So they can't make them take it out of the window. And what is it going to take? A doll hanging, blowing in the wind? To, because if there's only 1 doll, then it's not a store, that's an X-rated store. So you don't, you can sell it and you can display it, is what the code is telling me. I think that you guys should go with, if after this and it doesn't work, maybe think about, hey, the FCC won't let you show it. Our school systems are yanking it constantly. Books that don't even have half of what's said on these shirts. And thank God kids are reading these things. You know, if the FCC won't allow you, and you can't show it on TV, and you can't wear it into a courtroom, and you can't wear it here and there, why is every little kid that comes to our city that after their parents, believe it or not, most of these kids and families save for an entire year just a vacation in our city? And they're stuck with that in their faces. And thank you for doing this, but I think you guys need to seriously think, when they don't do it, what can we do beyond this? Because you're losing customers, you're losing city revenue. And I have a store, and I deal with these people, and they are constantly saying they're not, they're coming back. Along with somebody, and code, the bird thing, thank you guys, but it hasn't stopped them from feeding the birds. It's the same 2 stores that are doing this. They are still dumping a 25-pound bag of chicken feed in back of my store on a daily basis. Mr. Strickland was down there in the neighborhood. He's seen it. I've sent pictures to him. I mean, I will send you guys pictures every single day, but code can't do anything about it unless they red-handedly catch them doing it. So the code enforcement, thank you for doing it, but it doesn't, didn't help. And thank you. And I hope you all vote that we are going to do this, because it's a good thing for our city. Thank you.
Hold on a minute, George. Could he have just a couple more minutes to relate a story about unfair business practices from those 2 stores that he was just mentioning that won't, probably won't remove the shirts?
That would pull my thing for after the meeting talk, and I would appreciate it.
Okay.
One family came in, okay? Their daughter had a little card. She got 2 pairs of booty shorts, okay? The stupid cheesy little shorts. A tank top and a sweatshirt. Can't make this up. $400 they charged her. They told her if she didn't pay, they were going to arrest her. This is a 13, 14-year-old girl with all her money on a card, because all these kids got to have all their stuff on cards nowadays, or on their phones and whatever. If they weren't going to pay, they were calling the cops. Her family was in my store. They wouldn't let her out of the store. And when you called the police, they're like, oh, that's, that's a code issue. That's a, it's not their thing. Believe it or not, it's bilking, no matter how you put it. You tell somebody, you go in the store and you say, okay, the t-shirts, $9.99, don't worry about it. We'll put the siren on. This is an old, old thing they did back in 22, like 2000, they were doing this. You know, and, well, there's a pressin' charge. There's a decal charge. There's a waxing charge. There's a this charge. There's an old city ordinance that's on the books and nobody can find it. It states, it was written by a lawyer. It says, "A written statement of cost must be presented prior to commencement of custom work." Now what in the world kind of 13-year-old kid's going to understand that? They're supposed to be displayed, and every single store it isn't. You, I don't know what to do with these. I mean, people are getting ripped off, ripped off.
Mayor, City Commissioners, we do have an ordinance on?
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have an ordinance on the books. If code enforcement or the police department aren't aware of it, we'll get with them and discuss it with them. I know where that ordinance is.
You know what ordinance I'm talking about, correct? I mean, Shannon downstairs, her son went in and got ripped off. I was talking with her last Bike Week or whatever it was. And this is happening to our children in our community that go shopping down there? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I do have an additional speaker, Mr. John Nicholson.
John Nicholson.
John, up at 4:13, North Grandview. I was afraid that George wouldn't remember to say what's happening. We do have an ordinance. We went through this in the 80s. We went through this in the 90s. It is terrible for our tourist industry. So I'm asking you to listen to him, and please follow through on those t-shirts.
Thank you, too. That was my final speaker.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be denoted by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. This motion carries 7-0.
That was our last-agended item for this evening.
All right, we'll move on to commission comments. I don't remember who was first.
Reed is Fisher Reed.
Commissioner Reed? Consent on the, May. It's Commissioner May.
So I was hoping that we could maybe meet with Commissioner Reed in a meeting with regard to a potential event on MMB. We had some, we had 2 merchants approach us separately to see if we could maybe do something at some point. Maybe, not sure what it is yet, but I'm interested to hear what the 2 ladies have to say. So I'm wondering if Commissioner Reed would be interested in sharing that meeting with me.
Yeah, we recognize that they wrote us independently. And in order for us to talk about it, it has to be a public meeting so people can hear what we say. Some, a couple of the dates that they've asked for have already surpassed, but because they had spoken to us before, we couldn't commit to it. So we just like to see where they're coming from and what their ideas are, and see how, if we could, possibly support them.
So I'm not sure how to go about arranging that. Do we can? Yeah, we'll just send an email about some potential times in September, possibly October.
So once you have, I'm sorry, once you have the meeting set and the location set, and it has to be a location that's accessible to the public as well.
We'll probably do it here.
Okay. Then you'll just let me know, and we'll make sure to calendar, put it on the calendar so that it's publicly noticed.
We'll send a couple of dates to, I'll send dates to you, and then we can communicate that way and see if we come up with.
That's what Commissioner White and I did previously. And we used 1:49, so the citizens could hear what was being shared.
That's fine. My last number, number 2, is that, you know, 2 weeks ago, I was speaking with Mr. Tom McCaffrey, and we were talking about CRAs and things the city could do for Main Street, et cetera. And I reminded myself that maybe 8 years ago, I went down to Kansas. They were having a Main Street USA event. And it was their national yearly event. And I just went there to, this is before I was in office. I was curious to see what this Main Street thing was all about. And they have done this in other places. And of course, they have their 4 points, you know, place, person, promotion, along these lines. It is an actual program. And people keep talking about Deland. Yes, Deland did it. Deland did do it, right? It involves a commitment over time of about, I want to say 3 years at the time. And you had to commit to starting the program and then sticking with it. And it had to be funded. You had to hire a Main Street manager. And that person was responsible for all the promotion points. The important part was getting buy-in from citizens in the area and the merchants. There was funding involved from the merchants themselves. It's something that I think maybe we research, we explore, we find out more about. Maybe that would be a good push toward the Main Street. that would be a, a good push toward the Main Street concept. And I mean, I say that, given that we also have the apartments coming at the base of Main Street, on Beach Street. So that will be an intersecting point in multiple directions. But this would be a program where somebody would be hired, and they would be following this particular program, and I believe we've discussed it before, which is never something we followed. Right? Any thoughts on pursuing that, or just finding out more about it? But it's called Main Street USA.
I've heard about it.
Our staff, our staff has actually brought work back for, for you all, I think about a year ago. Angela Armstrong bought something back, so she still probably has that information available.
Because, I mean, as a funding source, yes, it requires buy-in from the merchants, but potentially, it's part of the CRA. Maybe it's something we could do with the CRA as well. But it would take it from us, and we would have a designated person handling, following their four points. They have a system that they've implemented. So it's just a thought. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Cantu?
Make it real quick. Next week, DOT should be cleaning the Seabreeze Bridge, I believe, September 9th. Also, I've contacted DOT because of palms on the interchanges of 92, 95, and I-4 need done, and they are getting with their contractor to trim our trees. Huge thank you to Public Works. If you notice on LPGA area, half the lights are up. I've also contacted Indigo CDD, and they're going to be refreshing the rocks out there, where you see, and trimming the palm trees on each side. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Henry?
Good afternoon. Quite a few things today. On September 11th, residents of Zone 5 may come out and have dinner with the commissioner, and we're going to discuss all of the things that have been going on in Zone 5. We don't have a Neighborhood Watch yet, we have not had one in over a year now, might even be over a year, more than that. And I cannot be responsible for Neighborhood Watch, but I can be responsible for keeping residents up to par on what's going on in the neighborhood. And so I am inviting you all out to join me at 6 o'clock at YSG on September 11th for dinner with the commissioner. I am going to feed you, so you can come, you don't have to worry about dinner. I'm going to have a good dinner there for you. The Artesian Market is Saturday, September 20th, in the courtyard at YSG. This is something that I am very excited about, I've been pushing for it, so I am happy to see it come to fruition. You will be able to come out and support local vendors, and buy food, plants, different accessories. How do they, if they want to be a vendor, do they?
Yeah, they, there is actually, I think there was something online, but contact Katie Presswood here. So if they just contact City Hall, they could actually sign up for vendors, and they will rotate them in and out.
Okay. You heard that. And so, the time is 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the YSG, Yvonne Scarlett Golden Center, 1000 Vine Street. And we're going to do those on Saturday, September 20th, October 18th, and November 8th. The next thing is that I am teaming up with the wonderful Distinguished Men of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity to do some beautification projects in this Zone 5. So you can look forward to seeing new walls going up over in, what is that?
Suburbia.
Suburbia. Suburbia, new walls, new walls going up in suburbia, some pressure cleaning and pressure, some pressure washing in different areas of the zone. Pressure washing of the fence over in Cedar Highland, and some signage going up over there, and different beautification projects going on in the zone. And so you can look forward to seeing that in the next couple months. Those projects will start getting going in the next, I think, two to three weeks. And for that project, I would like to donate $10,000 to Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity for Zone 5 Beautification Project. And I think that's, that's all my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Awesome.
Good evening. I'd like to start by sharing that MCDC led a Midtown Resource Fair at Bethune-Cookman, and it was very successful. They had over 15 organizations in our city that came together to provide those young people with supplies, school supplies, personal hygiene supplies. It was very, very successful, almost also to the point that I've invited Donna Banks and that group to also consider our Health and Resource Fair that we do for MLK on January 10th. We want to provide our city and our citizens and our students with as much as we possibly can. As you know, NPHC replenishes their school supplies, because everybody, seems like everybody and their mama has book fair giveaways to go back in the fall, but they don't realize those children use those things. And they need papers and pens and all that stuff to replenish in the spring. So that's coming January 10th. Mr. Murray, I just want to acknowledge, and you may say something about this, but commend you on your recognition of our local heroes and sheros. Still getting comments and, and kudos in regards to being recognized by you. It was a beautiful evening, one that will always be treasured and remembered by those citizens whose hearts you touched. Commissioner Strickland, myself, and our Director of Planning, Dennis Mrazak.
Mrazak.
You heard that, Mrazak. Represented our city this past week for three days in Charleston, South Carolina, learning about affordable housing and flooding from their perspective. We'll be putting something together to, to share with you all on what we learned, and some of the ways in which they approached it. Now, they flood much worse than us. They flood all the time. So we needed to know, well, how do you address this? Yeah, it's very low. Also want to share with you that you saw on the agenda this evening that I'm supporting the ladies of Alpha, Kappa Alpha Sorority. They are bringing their, their regional conference here, over 800 women of AKA will be here. They'll be at Mainland High School, having their regional conference on the 13th of September. And it was my pleasure to, to support those ladies incoming. And then just want to conclude with that on 9:20 is game night for the National Panellody Council. And that evening, we are supporting our Parks and Recs Department to replace and replenish the carnival games that we have for the youth, whenever they sponsor something for the youth, as well as when we have our seafood festival, when we have our children's Christmas party. The games that those youth are playing have just become a little dilapidated. So we want to replenish that. So this fundraiser is to support our own Parks and Recs Department. So if anyone would like to also support that in some form or fashion, we will accept those funds as well. And that, that game night is immediately following the game between the great Bethune-Cookman University and EWC.
I would like to do something with Parks and Recreation, because they do such a wonderful job.
They have all of us, yes, they do.
Yes, they do.
And we lost a, a family member from Parks and Recs as well.
From Parks and Recreation, yes, we did.
Who's always there to support us diligently at the Cherry Center. Diligently, in the midst of it all, sweet, sick, didn't even know she was sick when she was sick. And the recognition for Margie tomorrow night at the Cherry Center. And I'll be swinging by there before I go to, yeah, Margie, before I go to the, the police.
Police, crime prevention.
Crime prevention dinner tomorrow. So her, her recognition starts at 5, 5 to 7.
I'm going to come by there.
Yes. That concludes my comments.
Yes, thank you.
No comment, thank you.
Commissioner Strick?
Wow. I won't keep you too long. I spoke with Mr. Gross about a couple of things.
He started to look like Paul.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and talk about, a little bit more about the trip to Charleston. Charleston was very clean. It was. It was very clean, not a lot of vacant lots. Your predecessor had a fun time tearing down all that old stuff up there and hauling it to the dump. But it was beautiful, it was clean. I felt perfectly comfortable roaming around up there, day and night. I never saw a homeless person from the time we left here until we crossed Granada Boulevard when we were coming back on Wednesday. I saw one in Charleston. One? I don't believe you didn't get a picture. But, but, you know, and I had asked while we were up there, I said, where are you homeless people? You have homeless people? And they were kind of like, well, they're over there, or they're over there, or whatever. And, and I said, if you've not had a problem, or you haven't been served by the ACLU? And they said, no, we have not. So that may have something to do with it, that they don't get as scrutinized as we do when we try to do certain things. And, and they have no littering signs, and their fines listed as $1,000. And they're frequent around the, the city. And I asked Mr. Gross about being able to raise that, and he said we could probably raise it to 500 if we had the support here on this bench. The other thing is, could you tell us what we need to do since we raise a majority of the sales tax for Volusia County? Send it into the state, and it gets redistributed to the, to the cities with the most population, which is Daytona. What do we need to do to try to move that forward, so that we can get more of our money back, because we aren't raising most of it? Can we do that?
Well, in answer to the, the first question, if, if the commissioners want to raise the, the littering fine, we are authorized by state law to make the fine $500 per event. We, we created a fine schedule several years ago for all kinds of municipal violations, and set it at, I think, $200 per incident. We could change, we could change that. And in fact, I pulled that schedule and went over it with Deputy City Attorney Jackson earlier today, and suggested that while we're looking at doing that, we might want to, you know, look at some of the other ones with department input as well. So, you know, we'll, we'll proceed with that. It, it'll have to come back to you for approval to reset those fines. As far as, as far as the, the state law is concerned, that's, it's, it's, that law is created by the legislature, you would need to lobby the legislature to, to get them to change the general law on how sales taxes are distributed.
They don't even like us, so I doubt that it ever happened.
Yeah, we'll say that Commissioner Perez has been having discussions, trying to figure out how we can utilize TDC funds for areas around the Ocean Center and Main Street. So those are things that she serves on the TDC board, trying to figure out how we can get into that operations, and also communicate to the state legislatures, because those are issues that are really concerns that we have no control over. But I did say that, I know that she's been talking with our representatives in Tallahassee and at the county, and also will be bringing up something at the TDC about funds for our surrounding area.
The, thank you. The area around Main Street, we have some parking issues there. And I was told by the gentleman that we have the non-binding agreement with, that if he can get a guarantee on some parking, he's pretty close to ready to start negotiating with us for something permanent. So if we could expedite that somehow or another, I think it would, it would behoove us as a city. Why are you looking at me like that?
Who we have a non-binding agreement with.
I thought we approved a non-binding agreement with.
777 Main Street.
777 Main Street.
We don't have like that.
That was your start. You made a non-binding agreement, I just repeated it.
Yeah, that's for the least, but we, we don't have a agreement. We're working, going through the process of, of agreement to make sure we do have parking, but there's.
What are we waiting on?
You have to be able to acquire, and people have to be willing to sell.
Okay.
I believe we have, that is our parking still.
We have what?
Parking at 777 Main, in the front of it, that's our parking.
Oh, no, that's not near enough parking for what will be happening. Okay, since y'all are making fun of me, I'm done. I ain't playing with you no more. Let's go home.
That was last commissioner, okay. First thing, I had two things in there, both heavy. First thing, I'd like to thank each of you for joining us on, was it last Friday or the Friday, the, two Fridays ago. I still don't know what the name of the event was, because it really didn't have a name. It had, it was an idea. And I want to thank the staff, who did an amazing job of turning that into just an awesome evening. The purpose of it was simply to say to the residents of Daytona Beach, who are engaged in the city of Daytona Beach, that we appreciate your engagement. We appreciate you on many different fronts. And it doesn't matter if you are a person who, like John or Jenny, who shows up here at our commission meetings to share ideas and insight with us, or if you are a person that we don't know or we don't see, who sponsors a backpack giveaway, or any number of things, or who provides, many of whom we see who come before us and ask us for money. But these people very often take those $500, $1,000, and they find a way to stretch it into major events in our community, to serve the marginalized and the disenfranchised. So, last week, we honored 62 people, 48 of whom were able to come, 14 of whom, of whom were not able to attend, many of whom I will visit at their homes to share their items with them. So again, I thank you all, it is something that I hope to do again in the future. We appreciate each of you who recommended someone, which was all of you. In most of your cases, you all recommended, I believe, 24 people. I probably had 16 or 17 of those people on my list. So I had already written a list out, so that most of the people that you recommended were on my list as well. So that just tells you that we, we see the same thing in our community, and that we are the beneficiaries of some amazing people. And I just want to express my gratitude to you all for coming, because I think we all appreciate the residents. And that was my, our way of expressing that. And so, next time will be a little bit different, because obviously, the first time was a surprise. And I, I was able to pull that off. I don't even think you all really understood what you were attending. But, so next time will be different, and, but I will try to find a way to do it in a way that is equally as surprising. But our staff, they're very creative, and I appreciate them. So, thank you. Second thing, next Friday, or next Saturday, we will have the Academic All-Stars Parade. We will be planning to primarily honor Mainland High School and Seabreeze High School. But Seabreeze High School, unfortunately, I just got a message saying that they will not be able to participate, which is disappointing, but it's okay, we'll carry on. Beachside Elementary, and I want you all to know, every school that participates will receive a monetary stipend of some sort, using the Opera Funds to support the response that students have made as a result of COVID. So, right now, we have Mainland, Tirti, Westside, Palm Terrace, and we're hoping to hear from some others to participate. And so we will be asking the city manager to make certain that we are able to provide the schools with a check of some sort to recognize the achievements of the school. provide the schools with a check of some sort to recognize the achievements of the school. Beachside Elementary also received an A. Commissioner Strickland, Beachside is the only school, elementary school in Daytona Beach that does not have a book vending machine. Oh, they were given the money and they didn't buy it?
They were given the money. It got lost. Then they found it. Then they didn't spend it. And supposedly now, what is it, two years later? They are doing what they need to do to put a book vending machine in there in the very near future. So I don't believe that until I go over there and I see it, but I'll check on it as well.
So you're telling me that you gave them the money?
I did.
And they lost the money?
They did.
Was it that much? Okay.
That's the second school. It happened to me as well. But, but they wrote me and told me they spent it on something else.
And then they went back and bought the book?
They had to. Cause once I knew, I knew. Ben wouldn't let me get them.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry to hear that. That doesn't look good for our schools to not be able to hold on to money. And I'm going to reach out to the superintendent.
Okay.
Because that's unacceptable.
Last year, when, um, I went to, um, Scratch Kitchen with your crew.
That's right.
I went there and there was a young man sitting at the end of the table and he said, I want a book vending machine. And I said, what? You don't have a book vending machine? And that's when I got on the trail of chasing the money and found out that somehow or another they had, had lost it, sent it to the school board or something.
That's what happens when the money goes and they don't know where it goes. That we send it saying that it was book vending machine. But I'm very proud of that young man because I, I, uh, informed him when I visited the school that you don't have a book vending machine. He asked me about it. And I said, but you may want to lobby the person who represents your zone.
Right.
And he was a scholar. So when he met you, he did his job. And he lobbied his commissioner.
Right. He was, he was a good kid. He was very, very, uh, communicative, or however you say it. I mean, he, you know, he could carry on a good conversation. Rather than, it was a couple of kids that you could talk to them and they were like real bashful and quiet and withdrawn. But he was outgoing, well spoken, uh, on the ball.
Okay. We'll have our first Mayor's Honors, uh, celebration on October 3rd. And this year, the first place that we go is limousine ride for the students, red carpet, PF Chang's. So, uh, each time the restaurant, um, the restaurant pays for it. So we, and then the limousine ride is paid for. And then, uh, the Mayor's Honors Program, we pay for the trinkets. They will receive, uh, gift certificates from, Chick-fil-A, uh, Skyzone, um, I believe Dave and Buster's. Uh, and so it's, it's really a fantastic program. These students will also be allowed, be, uh, we hope, participating in the Academic Honors Parade. So we, we want to get as many, uh, people to participate in the parade as possible. Uh, so we're excited. Again, I'm going, so I'm, I'm glad we don't have to worry about that because I was basically going to be asking you for money for Beachside Elementary. But we don't, we, we don't have to do that. No more, no buses. Uh, but, uh, but you've already done that. Uh, so I will, uh, be asking though for, uh, I have, I have to look at the money amount, but it'll probably be, uh, 5K for Mayland High School. And then for all participating schools that participate, 1K. And this will come from, uh, to principals discretionary. I asked for 500 for Westside Elementary. Let's add, move that to 1,000. And we'll have a check for all of them to participate to, uh, they didn't get an A, but they're participating. But the schools that got an A that participate will get, uh, more. Seabreeze is an A, but unfortunately they rescinded their participation. So, um, but we are, we are going to celebrate. But I'll let you know the exact amount once I look at my, uh, the funds that we have left. Okay? Uh, and again, next Saturday, 6:00 PM, uh, will be the Academic All-Stars Celebration. And then the final thing is, um, I want to say this. Daytona Beach is a city that is often maligned on a lot of fronts. But one thing is for certain. We have hundreds, and I dare say thousands of people who give back to the community. And as a commission, we take resources that, you know, are allotted to us. And we share them in a way that empowers, uh, groups to be a servant-oriented community. And, uh, I think that's something that this commission has embraced. And I appreciate each of you for embracing that as a philosophy and for participating in that. You know, as commissioners, you often find yourselves in spaces that say that we care about doing the work that lifts all boats. Uh, so, uh, thank you. Mr. Manager?
One more thing.
Yes, sir.
Since coming back from Charleston, I, I have done my best not to speak negatively about anything in our city. And, and I'd like to challenge everybody sitting up here not to say negative stuff about our city and beyond. Because if we, if we're not positive about it, how can we expect others to be positive about it? So.
Amen.
Enough saying.
All right, Mr. Manager?
Yes, just one item that I had on there. Um, if you've been reading or hearing about the Halifax Humane Society, they're going to be transitioning how they receive animals into our community. Our contract ends with them at the end of September. We're going to be bringing back a, um, a contract to you all, a temporary type contract where we can get out of it. We've been working with the county, our sister cities, some managers of trying to figure out how we can create or set up our own facility if necessary because the cost, um, has, has doubled from what was originally being, um, charged about 100, 150 to about $300 per animal that comes in and how we collect animals. So we're going to have to do something as a city. We've been meeting, um, HHS has, they're transitioning. They're going to still take animals, but they're not going to take the, um, dangerous animals. And so we're going to have to work with a private entity or another veterinarian to try to deal with those as well. So I'll be coming back to you all over the, in the next two weeks, letting you know how we're going to process this until we're able to work with the county and other, um, sister cities to figure out how we can handle, um, some of the animals that will be brought to the shelters. And so I just wanted to put that out there to you all that we're working with. It's been a couple of months of discussions. There's been stories in the paper, um, what the county is trying to set up a facility, um, here in, in, in the, the land area. Uh, but it's going to be a challenge for us, um, the first couple of months, but we think we're going to have something in place by the end of this month. But we, it won't be a long-term solution until we're able to talk with other city managers and they take information to their commission. So I just wanted to share that information with you. Our goal is to work with our sister partners in the county to create something for all of the citizens of Volusia County, but specifically for Daytona Beach residents.
All right. Thank you, sir. And I've heard good reports on your work in this area. Um, Mr. Gross?
Uh, nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you continue, I'd like to take a, a personal privilege and just say that yesterday was the day, but Friday is the date. I have served Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University for 30 years. 30 years.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. 9595.
Wow. All right. Okay. At this time, we will hear from the greatest residents on the planet, the residents of Daytona Beach.
Okay. Our first speaker is John Navarro and on deck is John Nicholson.
Mr. Miller, I didn't see you back there. You were all so present on last Friday. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Navarro.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. I have good news on some people who are really serving our community in a volunteer capacity. I, I don't know if you saw the article a few weeks ago with Baby Steps, an organization we have on Keats Street. And, uh, these people are volunteers. Some are paid through donations that are totally voluntary from the community. There's no tax money, of course, you would know about it, uh, no tax money from the city or anybody whatsoever, uh, for this organization. And, uh, I know a medical doctor that works, uh, as a volunteer, uh, at Baby Steps. And I've been trying, um, for several months to advocate and find out how we can help, uh, prenatal care and get prenatal care for, uh, expecting mothers, uh, that are marginalized in our community. And the Baby Steps is a very good organization. I have no, uh, heart in the running of it day to day at all. Uh, but I advocate for them and I'm on meetings with hospital administrators and different people in this organization, uh, and trying to get, uh, donations for them from anywhere we can. And also we do have a, a grant that's a possibility that would come to seven different counties in, uh, our area, one of us, uh, being Volusia County. And it would be a telehealth opportunity. And so the expected mothers, there are some mothers that due to transportation issues can't get to Baby Steps. And we would want to reach them. Uh, and so, uh, we're working with, uh, different, uh, medical organizations. The restrictions by the state, which I believe in accountability, um, and the restrictions are quite tight, which they would have to be. And, um, only some, uh, medical organizations, uh, can fulfill this, uh, grant. But it would be quite a gain for the seven counties and quite a lot of help for, you were speaking earlier about the marginalized communities. But there is good news because, uh, Baby Steps is working to, uh, help mothers who would have no other resource. And from what I've learned with, uh, Medicaid and access to Medicaid, uh, that for expecting mothers and, uh, people in our community, that you may get Medicaid, but getting access to a, uh, physician or medical care is, uh, sometimes quite difficult. Not due to any of the medical people themselves, uh, but just the realistics of day-to-day life. So I just thought it's a good story. It's something in our community. And if there's any way you could visit Baby Steps, it's on Keats Street. And if it's in your capacity to, uh, help them.
If you're familiar with them. Yes.
Mayor, can I say something? Eileen, Daytona Beach News Journal did an excellent story on that, if you did, if anybody wants to read more about it.
Is that Dr. Carbiners?
Yes, very much so. Yes. That was, yeah. Great work.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson and on deck is Gwen Chester.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grand. We have a couple of things. One, with regard to Main Street USA. We had one on Beach Street for years, Dr. Cheryl Cook. Two, with regard to the CRA salaries, uh, I would ask you to, uh, look into it and find out why they're charged differently. Why the CRA for downtown gets too bite of the apple. With last time I saw it, for 6,500, the, uh, our, um, city attorney charged downtown and the DDA combined 6,500, which was about, I guess, um, 13 hours a month. For, uh, Main Street CRA for half an hour to an hour, they got charged $17,000 a year. It's not fair to charge Main Street because they have more money, more money for all the services that everybody else got. So the accounting, see each CRA gets charged from the accounting office. We got charged three times the cost of the other CRAs. It's just not fair. So I would ask you to look at that, that they get charged equally. Third, Paula dumped on me last, uh, meeting on the appearance of, uh, Beachside. Jim Chisholm did not like Beachside, kept the Beachside, uh, down for 17 years. All right? There's a lot of catching up to do. I was not here for a meeting a year or two when this commission said there was a need to spend money on the Beachside. You have not done it yet. I would ask you to, seriously, no serious money. We need serious money to catch up for 17 years of neglect. So I'm asking you, um, to look carefully. Take a walk. I walked every morning. I walked Main Street. I walked the boardwalk. Take a look at it. Is that what you think we should look like? You don't think so. But seriously, you, you did Seabreeze and Seabreeze was in a heck of a lot better shape than Main Street was. Remember your walk on Seabreeze? Okay. But try for Main Street. That's our, that's our bread and butter. Boardwalk, A1A, that's our bread and butter.
Main Street is harder and more expensive, John.
It's only harder because we did not do what we should have done when we closed the Main Street entrance to the beach. We, it was before your time, but we dropped the ball. We have to pick it up. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gwen. Is it Chester? And on deck is Edward Montgomery.
Good afternoon. I'm going to be speaking on the behalf of two different churches. Um, St. Petersburg Missionary Baptist Church and Mount Meska Missionary Baptist Church, the Outreach Ministry. Where, um, we're asking for supporters to support the children and the community, giving back to the children and the community that are less fortunate and that are on low income. We're asking to open up an after-school program so that the children that doesn't have help when they're out of school, to have help with their homework and things of that nature and offer them different, um, things like activities and stuff of that nature to keep them occupied when they're not at school. To keep down crime levels. And if they have something to do that's going to be exciting and also educating, then they probably wouldn't be robbing and going through the system and all of that stuff. So that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get the children's attention. We're trying to keep it. We're trying to further their education for those who want an education, to become doctors, lawyers, or whatever it is that they need to be. And we're asking for sponsors to help us with that. And, um, we're also asking for sponsors to help us with transportation, to get the children back and forth to like different outings and to the outreach ministry, um, after-school program. So we're asking that if you don't mind, if you find it in your heart to be a blessing to these children, to help them further their education, please, sir, and please, ma'am, do so.
Our next speaker is Edward Montgomery and on deck is Jenny Nezak.
Good evening, everybody. My, um, request today is, I'm the bishop of, I'm her bishop. But I went to the store over on Martha Luther King and the store was closing. It had a sign on the door. It was two kids standing there. And we all were standing there. The sign was saying that they, they went, they went to the bathroom and they'll be back. So I asked the two little guys. I said, well, they were wondering why the store closed. I said, well, read the sign. And when they, I said, well, I tell you what, I got fired off if anybody could read the sign. They're in the fifth grade. And it just said, uh, went to the bathroom, be back in five minutes. And they couldn't read it. And it hurted me, but then I, 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 we have a building right there on Martha Luther King, 509, uh, on Martha Luther King, that could be a resource building for them. Then it's, I know everybody been looking at the building, but I, I've been trying, we've been trying for the past 15 years, find out it is a historical building. And we're, we're trying to find funding for it and. And what she's saying is that we got a little church here on Rose Street. This is where the homeless moved from over on, off of, on the other side of town on, Lord have mercy. They moved from one side of town and we're over on Rose Street. So, now they're, they're moved over there and the young kids are over there. And just like she said, I, I, I've been trying to get them to do their homework by offering them different things to do. And the transportation, the past 15 years, like I said, we could have had that building, we could have had that building turned to a resource center for computers and everything. It's big enough for everything. But no one could tell us, at the city, I had to call all the way to Tallahassee to find out that the building is historical. And now, I come to the city and they had, I had been asking them, and now they say it's a historical site, but you're tearing those buildings down now. But we got to have help over there. And I need people to, to be able to come and, the homeless, using my computers just to, they try to sign up for food stamps. And the home, the mothers that, like she said, that they need help with the kids, with their homework and stuff like that. If I can get, just get a, I can get a community garden on Rose Street, I'd be fine. I can't, I can't, because over there, we have nothing. Back in, back in the days, that used to be the worst part. It was a Saigon, they used to call it. Now, the worst place in this city. Now, it's, it's, it's starting to come back again. But I would rather try to put something there, establish something, a garden, getting these kids off the streets, like she said. The other day, we had a high, it was a high-speed chase with two people, not even the police. And the police didn't even show up. But it's all right, though, because we, we, as a community. Go ahead.
Bishop, you say you all own 509 Dr. Martha Luther King? And that's the pink building or?
Yes, it is.
So, have you ever had communications with the redevelopment about the, the funding that's available for people in the CRA?
We, we were trying to get, now they're saying some, but over the years, I couldn't get nobody to say anything.
So, do we have your, is this contact information on that or before that?
Yeah.
Is this the corner of MLK and Lumis?
Yes.
I thought Chester owned that building. He does not? He does not? Okay.
No, we're owned by Luke Charles.
Yeah, it is. It's right there. I know exactly. Someone will contact, because there are, there is funding available for those structures off of MLK in the 509.
That's what, that's what Main Street, because I've got everything going over to, to the little church, but why should I do that? We could have a whole community.
Do you own the green space beside the, the corner? But the building are just a lot for the church? I mean, the building?
A lot for the building.
Okay. So, you don't own the, there's vacant land?
The two records, no. They, they've been trying to buy me out, but I don't, I, I don't, I don't. You know, I mean, I'm not giving up because I, I want it for the, for the city, for, for, it could be, it could be anything to help the kids and the mothers in the city. And that's a perfect spot for it, right there.
But the area that you're saying for the community garden, you don't own it?
Yes, we own the whole, we own that whole, one, two, on Rose Street, 331 Rose Street. We own the church. We own the one, two, three. We're all popping, all three of those.
So, you own the area for the community garden?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll follow. Who's going to follow up? Okay. Thank you.
We got, I'm sorry, your time is expired.
We got you. You're going to follow up.
We got your phone number.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Jenny Nazak and on deck is Steve Miller.
Good evening, everybody. Jenny Nazak, 501 Harvey. Daytona Beach is the kind of city that attracts people to basically become freelance public servants. We are a really wonderful city with a lot of heart. And you should, you can see the evidence. There's so many people that basically appoint themselves to be some kind of freelance grassroots public servant, just doing stuff. And that says a lot about our city and what we value, the education, people, families, all that. Environmental tidbit from the wonderful City Managers Newsletter. We have a Sustainability and Resiliency Officer in Daytona Beach. Now, isn't that cool? Reporting directly to Utilities Director Shannon Ponitz. James Lloyd, Sustainability and Resiliency Officer, will play a key role in advancing Daytona Beach's long-term environmental stewardship and climate resilience goals. Awesome. Now, another component of resilience that doesn't always get talked about is transportation. And that's part of my freelance gig, is I do transportation checks. And in a transportation check the other day on some of the arterials west of Nova, I observed a woman in a wheelchair, a mobility scooter with her oxygen tank, having to get to her bus stop by going against traffic. There's no shoulder, there's no sidewalk against traffic, and then making a left, again, just on the plain road with, because there's no sidewalk and no shoulder, to get to her Votran bus stop. And that bus stop's about to be canceled, so she might have to go a half a mile, mile to her bus stop instead of a quarter mile. And all this stuff is multi-jurisdictional. It's nothing that you guys can just wave a wand and fix. And I know a lot of you work really hard to address mobility and transportation. So, I would just say, keep your eyes open for the non-driving public. They're often not very visible. And if there is an accident, that woman's going to be blamed for being on the road.
What street was this, Jeannie?
This was actually, let's see, Clyde Morris and then left on Mason. So, she was coming out of her apartment and then she had to get to a medical appointment that she has to go to multiple times. Now, speaking of transportation, Commissioner Strickland, I would like to beseech you to ask the fancy brewery guy to consider, as, as an alternative to needing more and more parking that would necessitate whatever, tearing down more buildings or something, that he has a population of thousands of people at those hotels that are in easy-walking or Ubering distance of his prospective pubs. So, maybe he would consider that. Does it not, does it always have to be parking? There are a lot of us who support our beloved Main Street businesses on foot. Thank you.
Our final speaker tonight is Steve Miller.
Where did you, you said Clyde Morris and Mason. Where exactly is the bus stop?
You can come on up, Steve.
Steve Miller, 383 Walnut Street, beautiful Daytona Beach, Florida. Two things. Mr. Mayor, I really enjoyed the banquet. The food was super outstanding and exceeded my expectation. And, and thank you for the personal note that you gave to each and every one of us. And I wanted to come tonight just to remind you guys that we have a Zone Six neighborhood watch. It's going to be on the 8th, which is Monday. And we're going to have Florida's greatest city manager as our guest speaker. Looking forward in having him in attendance. In fact, we almost celebrating his anniversary here to the city of Daytona Beach. And we're looking forward in having him and we're inviting the entire city to come out. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Speaking of our city manager, he had a birthday this past weekend, he and his twin brother. Happy belated birthday.
Happy birthday, city manager. Good night, Daytona Beach. I'm out.